I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Could we have roll call, please, Ron?
Mayor Segata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me for the flagrant leaving?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for showing up tonight. First meeting of the new year. Happy New Year to everybody. Some reminders, all city offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, January 28th, 6:00 PM, right here. We have a notice of potential quorum of city commissioners so that they may attend the 31st Annual Municipal Day held in Santa Fe at the La Fonda Hotel. Reception will be Thursday evening at 5:30 and the municipal day session will be from 10 to 12 on Friday, February 7th. At this time, we'd like to also recognize our holiday decorating contest winners. We had a contest for Christmas decorations this year. For the business side of it, first place was Doggy Styles, right down here on the corner, and runner-up was Enchanted Grounds. We thank them for their participation and everybody that did. Residential decorations, we had Teresa Cruz at 224 South 7th Street. She was the winner. And runner-up was Carol Martinez at 933 North 3rd was runner-up. We thank everybody for participating and sharing the holiday spirit with us. Next up, we have a Urock awareness. I want to turn that over to Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
I'd like to recognize both Mr. David Wilson and Cheryl Dudley, is that correct? And it has been pointed out and duly noted that the minute you guys moved to town, you got in fall and you started volunteering everywhere and you've done some good work. So, we'd like to thank you for that work.[160.16][160.16](Applause)
(Inaudible).
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for what you've been contributing to the community. We appreciate it. At this time, we will take comments from the general public. I would just ask that if it is something pertaining to some item on the agenda that holds your comments to them, other than that, we'll take any comments right now. Please, okay, please state your name and...
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Richard Torres, T-O-R-R-E-S. I'm a homeowner on a North 1st Street. And I'd like to propose, due to the excessive speeding on North 1st, it almost seems like I-25 sometimes, and I'd like to propose a four-way stop where two other two-way stops already are, and either at North 1st and Highland, which is just across the bridge, and/or at North 1st and Moro, which is a little bit below the bridge. And I think that would be very significant and bring in that neighborhood a little peace and safety. And kids could freely play out in their yards without having to worry about getting hit by a vehicle, whether it be residential, commercial, or whatever. So, that's my issue and I hope it's appropriate to let you know that. And at both those places, there's already a two-way stop, so we'd just entail adding two more stop signs there. And boom, I think that would really help a lot. And if necessary, possibly maybe even a blinking red light, since it'd be a new thing, just to warn people before they get there that it is a stop sign and a four-way stop area. I think that'll really help North 1st Street calm down just a little bit more. And I think it'll be beneficial to everybody, renters, homeowners, and anybody going up and down North 1st Street.
All righty. Appreciate your comments. And that's about it. Okay. Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I know that North 1st Street is a busy street and a little more busy now with construction going on at the filter plant.
Up at the plant, yeah.
But, Mr. Berry, I guess we can look into that and see what we can maybe come up with.
Mayor and Commissioners, I will look into that. And I would say that North 1st Street is, there's a lot of traffic on it. It would be classified as an arterial, I think, but it is through a residential area. So, we see a lot of traffic. You know, I drive it every day. I know Mayor Pro Tem Schuster drives it every day. And you have a pretty good volume on that. Now, with these requests, and you know, we've, I think the commission has heard a couple similar requests over the past year, we do some analysis of that. And I think that whatever we do, it typically does have an impact on traffic. And sometimes it's an unintended consequence, so we look at that. And so, we definitely will consider that, we'll look at that. I think there are a number of different angles that we could look at, maybe different things that we could do. And we evaluate, you know, what that result is going to be. I think that sometime back, we talked about East 10th Street and we talked about maybe one-way traffic on a portion of a downtown street. And we actually did a formal engineering analysis of that. The engineer actually just delivered that report to us yesterday, so we've got that. We anticipate some signage improvements on those. We did see some things that concerned us in regard to, you know, how you notify the driving public, what they're driving on. And so, we'll do a similar thing. We'll look at North 1st and try to approach that from a technical standpoint as to, you know, whatever we do, what is the impact going to be?
On the other hand, it would possible maybe to have a speed trap set up just to kind of let people know that there are, the law is watching, but I think that'll be a little more expensive, having to set some police officers there. So, I think a stop sign would be a lot cost, more cost-effective and very beneficial to the community and the neighborhood there. Thanks for your feedback and rebuttal there, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, sir.
And like I said, I am a homeowner there and a future business owner as well. So, I feel my input is taken for what it's worth.
We appreciate you coming to us tonight and bringing it to our attention. And we will look into it.
I appreciate it. I noticed on the First Street Bridge, there is some type of counter there that, I don't know who's monitoring that, but there's some type of device there. I don't know if it's catching speed or counts.
Yeah, it's actually related to a wildlife study.
Oh, okay.
That's ongoing.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's, I'm not, I don't know all the details on it, but it's related to wildlife movements.
Yeah, I noticed someone there like real early in the morning, like 5:00 in the morning, messing with the bridge. And I was about to holler at my door saying, "Hey, what are you doing?" You know, but I'm like, "Nah, let him do his thing." And when daylight came, I went and checked it out. It looked like it was some type of official type of thing. I'm like, "Okay, let it be." But I was hoping it'd be some type of traffic counter or maybe catching speeds, you know, so they could eventually get to some type of safety on North 1st Street. Okay, I'll let you all carry on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Can you state your name, please?
My name is Bruce Dates. Thank you for having me this evening. Mayor Segata, Mayor Pro Tem Schuster, Commissioners, Mr. Berry, Ms. Antonucci. This evening, I'm representing the U.S. Census Bureau. And what we're doing is we're gearing up for the decennial census, and it's very important for the state of New Mexico, because I hate to state it, but New Mexico is the worst for being counted, and it's a special interest item for the governor. And they've even had a program, the New Mexico Counts Program. I attended a briefing, and I don't know if you all have attended that briefing, but it's gonna, it's gonna be imperative for us to get the count correct. And if we count all the people here in Colfax County and especially in Raton, that's gonna bring $3,700 per capita in federal funding. So, my mission, and since we're, it's a rolling program and I have the basic calendar for you, should you want that information, right now, we're going to be recruiting census takers. And so, my mission is to get the word out through every possible conceivable channel to all of our people who live here. And the qualifications to be a census taker are not that difficult. You have to be 18 years of age, you have to be a citizen of the United States, and you have to have pretty good moral character. And so, my mission is to go to every possible conceivable outlet and let the people know that there's good work with the census. What do I mean by good work? I mean 16, 50 an hour. People can make their own hours. It's very flexible. Right now, the census is looking for 20 hours a week. It could be less. It all depends on what the workload is and how many people we're getting recruited. And we need several hundred recruited and what the final number of enumerators for Raton and Colfax County is going to be made up in Albuquerque. So, my mission is just to get as many people to apply as possible. And so, what I'd like to do is ask the commission and the mayor and everyone involved for the good offices of the city to be able to use perhaps the convention center for training. I know there's Wi-Fi available there. I don't know if the Aquatic Center is owned by the city. And there's also Wi-Fi there. There's a room off to the side, which would also be a nice small place for training that might be able to be done and for me to get people involved with the census. So, with that, that's all I basically have for you this evening. You will be seeing all sorts of flyers at the bank and at the library and other places around town, businesses, government, and I hope to go through every possible conceivable NGO, non-governmental organization, church groups, the writers group, the dancing group, everyone. So, I need to get the job done before the end of February because everything starts in earnest. Training starts March 5th. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I'd like one of your calendars.
Certainly. It's in the form of a bookmark. If I may approach.
And Bruce, I would just state, Mayor and Commissioner, yeah, any city facilities are certainly available for whatever you need. I don't know, do you have contact information? Maybe I could do what I, work with you on that, or do you have a different local contact? You know, any contact information that we can. But yeah, any way we can help, we want to help. We understand the importance of the census and certainly want to do anything we can to help.
And appreciate that, Mr. Berry. And I'm gonna make an appointment to come visit with you.
Sounds good.
Sometime this week, if possible. And we can iron out any communications and requirements as I speak with the folks in Albuquerque because the requirements are always changing. It's in flux. And I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
And Bruce, you know, you're a regular down at my place of business. It is a city-owned building. We do have Wi-Fi. You could probably make some of the space available there if anything needed.
Thank you, Mayor. I did speak with Vicki today and I wanted to come here first and get it from the commission and everyone here.
I will be out on Thursday, but any other day would be okay, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I see no one. We will move into business items. Item 6A, approval of the December 17th, 2019 special permission meeting minutes. Do you all have copies of those in here? You were looking at me. Did I say that?
You're good, Mayor.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 17th.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from December 17th. Is there any further discussion?
That was me.
I'm a rough man tonight, Ron. Seeing that all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Raton, New Mexico Joint Utility System Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2020, in the principal amount of $1,754,000 for the purpose of acquiring, extending, enlarging, bettering, repairing, or otherwise improving the city's joint utility system, providing for the issuance and sale of the bonds, providing that the bonds will be payable and collectible solely from net revenues to be derived from the operation of the city's joint utility system, providing for the terms and conditions of the bonds, the manner of their execution, the method of paying the bonds, and other details concerning the bonds and such system, including but not limited to covenants and agreements in connection therewith, gratifying action previously taken in connection therewith and appertaining thereto. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, no, I just was getting worked up on this item here a little too early, I think. But you have in your packet, and this really came in pretty late, about a 25-page copy of the proposed ordinance. The action would be consideration of introduction of this ordinance tonight. If you are agreeable to introducing the ordinance, then the city clerk will make the proper public posting, and we will have a public hearing in the future, and we will consider adoption of the ordinance in the future. Now, we have a temporary situation in Raton Water Works where we really have two general managers that are both on hand to address this item, Dan Campbell and Terry Sykes. I would point out one thing, the ordinance has been drafted by the attorney in this matter, Daniel Alsop, and working with USDA. This really came down to him working on this today, and we got this recently. And I know it's a fairly thick document. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Sykes will discuss the contents of the document. One thing that the attorney pointed out to me is that you'll notice on the ordinance in the second line of the first page, we do call that the Series 2020. And on the agenda, we labeled it as Series 2018. And so, if we could make that correction and just note that in that lengthy description of the ordinance, merit is Series 2020. And Mr. Campbell, would you, and Mr. Sykes like to come forward and really tell us what we got here, what the action is?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we came a couple months ago with this first go-around, and essentially, it's just formalizing the loan portion from the filter plant improvements. And once this is adopted, we could move on to formally draw our grant funds. That's it in a nutshell.
So, it's a very straightforward action. You'll remember that we, you know, we're required to get some interim financing through a private bank, co-bank originally, and then did all this action here to transfer that to USDA. I would say that the interest rate in this is really good. It's actually gone down since we talked about it. So, I think you see, is it 1.6%?
1.625%.
Rate that's listed in there now, really great rate. I would state also that this is financing a project that we've talked about for a long time now. The project, renovation of the filter plant, is underway. I walked through the project with Mr. Sykes and Mr. Campbell last week. There is significant progress on the project. You know, you have a challenge every day on construction of that nature and that scale, but good contractor, everything is going pretty well there. I think that Raton Water Works anticipates completion of that this spring. And of course, that's a major public works project for the city of Raton. But we are, you know, taking this action on a project that, what would you estimate the progress towards completion would be?
80%.
Yeah, yeah. So, well underway and going well.
Any questions for Mr. Sykes or Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell, you have any comments?
No, the 2018 issue because of this original review of that serious process with USDA. And now, we're actually to the point of doing the bonds for the series.
All right. We have some more to introduce. We have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the bonds. I'm gonna keep a brief right there. Do I, you all, enter the whole?
I think you're good. Mayor, we went through it one time.
There you go.
But notice that this is the 2020 issue.
With the amendment to the 2020. Yes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I would just add, Mayor and Commissioner, if you all could hang on to your ordinance and bring it with you to future meetings, and we won't be printing a lot of these copies here, but they will be available to the public. We'll put it on the website, and it's some fun reading.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Item C, deliberate and act on introduction of ordinance, enacting and adopting a supplement to the Raton Code of Ordinances. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I am reading from my notes provided to me by Ms. Antonucci. And she wants to communicate to the commission that this is for the most recent codification of ordinances, 997-1005, included in Supplement Number 10. So, the online version has been updated and the supplement pages will be added to the books. But this action would be for that recent codification of the books.
Comments or questions for Mr. Berry?
I'm going to approve the... I'm going to introduce the addition of the ordinance. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the introduction of this ordinance, enacting and adopting the supplement for Raton Water Works. Ordinances, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, introduction of ordinance, amended section 130.136, unlawful carrying of deadly weapons allowed for hunting within city limits that is scheduled, managed, and regulated by the New Mexico Game and Fish Department for the purpose of controlling overpopulation of wildlife in designated areas and as authorized by the city commissioner. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is bringing back an item that we've talked about in the past. The commission heard that there is a particular issue with an overpopulation of wildlife in the, on the golf course or in the area of the golf course, causing some damage to greens. And you also heard a report by New Mexico Game and Fish that if it was the commission's desire to consider changing the ordinance to allow weapons to be used in that area, that they would try to coordinate some kind of a special hunt. And so, I think that generally in our time of talking about this, I've received, you know, comments that would be in opposition to proceeding with the ordinance. The introduction has not gone forward. We bring back the introduction of the ordinance to the commission. We did not take any action on it the last time, and for me and the city clerk, that means that we have to keep bringing it back to you until we get some kind of resolution on this. But I think there are definitely, you know, pros and cons, definitely serious concerns about the concept of hunting wildlife that close to residential areas on the golf course. And I think the concern has been expressed to us here in the office that it's really not an effective way of addressing the problem, and maybe we ought to look at other solutions to addressing the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I recall from our last meeting that I was in attendance, and again, we took this here. We asked him, you know, point-blank, is this gonna make any effect? And they said, "Not really." So, one hunt is not gonna solve the problem. This is something that we, we allow this, we'd have to go on for additional hunts. And quite frankly, I'm really not in favor of that because all of the calls I have received, I have not received one phone call in favor of this, other than talking with Mr. Obar when he was here. The rest of the phone calls have all been in opposition.
Yeah, I think we've heard from, the majority of the public has been not in favor of that. So, I would personally move to deny the introduction of this ordinance.
I'll second.
I have to agree with that. Although it is a problem, Mother Nature, I think, in the long run, has to be considered here to take care of it. As I was stopped and told on the street, excuse me, that the city, I was told, is the city actually gonna send somebody and slaughter all the game in Raton? And I told them, "No, that's not, that's what's going around," but that's not the case. And I, for one, I'm against changing an ordinance to allow for the deadly weapons being carried and for, especially for the hunt in the area talking about. I think that they could go about it, the game department could look at some other ways to do this, and let us hear the new stuff that would come forward from it. So, I agree that we should not accept this ordinance.
Okay, so, we do have a motion and a second to deny the ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor might have some people who want to address the commission.
Do you all like to address us?
You missed my presentation last month. I'd be glad to redo it, just for you, Mayor, but I think I'll hold back.
I had some other things to take care of.
No kidding.
I'm sure you weren't quite succinct and...
Not really.
Okay.
Could you do it again for us, just for...
Okay, so, we do have a motion and a second.
We have a gentleman back there.
Okay, Bruce?
Not being a long-term resident of Raton, it's my understanding that the carrying of weapons in New Mexico open is perfectly legal and fine. If someone is confronted with a wild animal, it's, they have to defend themselves. I heard a terrible story about some guy walking his dogs and the bear attacked him. So, that's certainly in play at all times. I guess the question is, and I have wildlife coming to my apricot trees and herds of deer, and that's one of the great things about living here, that the wild, we interact and live with the wildlife. So, I wouldn't want the golf course to get any special hunting privileges. They have to go hunting like everyone else. So, I'm sure that with some electric or some noise makers, they should be able to keep any deer or elk out of their, off their greens. And I'm absolutely against regular hunting in the city limits because the stray bullet goes wherever it wants to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of denying the ordinance? Vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank everyone for their comments. Item E, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-1 Public Duty Policy.
Mayor and Commissioner, you recall that we have talked about a resolution regarding open meetings in past years. And in some of the training that staff had received, we got some additional comments regarding this. And so, again, I'm going to turn to my notes here and just state that the procedure for providing notice of a regular or a special meeting, we're looking at a revision of what we have done in the past. And this results from recent Attorney General training. And what we have done previous to this would be to post the agenda in six public places. And we... And we've run into some issues with that in regard to, let's say, the county courthouse, because that's not open on Friday. If we have weather, some of the other public places may not be open. And in our training, the Attorney General's Office said that's not necessary for Raton. So we will make it available to any media. We, as routine, do make it available to local media, generally have a request, and they report on that, and that meets the AG's requirement for posting agendas and notifying people of, of these public meetings. And then typically in the open meetings resolution, the Commission would state that we would meet at regular days and at regular hours, so that that's predictable to the public. The public typically knows that the Commission would meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 6:00. And so that's the spirit of the, the Open Meetings Act. And we do have this Resolution 2020-1 in your packet regarding public meeting policy and a resolution concerning governing body meetings and public notice required, and this resolution would incorporate those things that I've mentioned, specifically that change to posting in the six public places. We've run into some issues with that.
And in reading through it, I noticed that they're getting to, and it may have been on the last one, I don't remember, but the city website and social media, so...
Right.
In today's world, everybody's social media.
Right.
So I would think that would qualify as posting.
Yeah, there's more effective ways of getting the word out.
Any questions for Mr. Barry? Make a motion to approve, Bruce, 2020-1.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2021, public meeting policy. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the side of I.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Thank you. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-2, November 2019 financial report. Robin, are you up or Scott?
I will try to handle this, Mayor. We will, we will stumble through the financial reports. And so, City Clerk Michael Ann Antonucci has put together the report for you for the recent period. I think on the second page end, you can see that we are 3.84% our year-to-date budget projection. We've, from what we have seen in the recent period, we've seen a encouraging uptick of grocery receipts tax in our revenues. Past couple of months certainly doesn't indicate a trend, but the past couple of months have been fairly strong, and hopefully we would see that, that trend continue. We are getting into some months where it's, tends to taper off a bit, and, but I think that the result compared to our year-to-date budget is encouraging. And so I think that's generally what you see in the information here. Our available cash in the general fund remains strong. Auditors have said in past audits that that's something that they would look for, and we do remain strong. I would anticipate that we would bring some one-time cost items to the Commission during the rest of this fiscal year, that will have an impact on that reserve. We'll see also some recurring costs that will impact that reserve. We'll talk about, you know, what's going on with the health insurance, what's going on with retirement benefits, some things like that, that will tend to kind of equalize that, but the reserve has been strong, and I think it's really a testament to the management of, of staff plus the Commission to get there. It's taken some years to really stabilize that general fund reserve. So I think that comes to a point where we want to talk about putting some of those funds to work to meet the needs of the community though as well. So I would anticipate that over the upcoming months remaining in the fiscal year, and as we get into budget discussions in the spring. And Mayor and Commission, I'll hold up there and answer any questions you have about the financial report, but this is submitted by the city clerk for your consideration.
Now a question on the finances in our little board down there, said about the district meeting, have we moved it to the museum, or is it gonna be at the convention center?
Mayor, we are hosting the, the district meeting and municipal league in March. That will be moved to the museum, and the second floor of the museum, and that date is March 25th, the District III League meeting.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve our Resolution 2020-2, November 2019 financial report. Second.
We have a motion and two seconds to adopt Resolution 2020-2, approval of the November financial report. All in favor, vote by the side of I.
Aye.
Close? Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-3, participation in local government road fund grant agreement L 400447, change of scope and termini. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, in March of every year, applications are requested from the New Mexico Department of Transportation for their local government road fund, and we have talked about this every year. They have two programs we participate in, Cooperative Agreement Program and the Municipal Arterial Program. This item is in relation, in regard to the Cooperative Agreement project that we applied for last March, and that was a reconstruction of Kearney Avenue or a portion of Kearney Avenue, and our estimated cost was over $200,000. Now, we did receive grant funding from that application, but the grant funding total amount was a little more than $51,000. And we really can't do an effective job of reconstruction on Kearney Avenue with that amount of money. And I would anticipate that we will resubmit Kearney Avenue project for that $200,000-plus amount as we get into March. However, we do have $51,000 of grant fund in hand, and I would like to ask for your consideration of this resolution. My recommendation to the Commission is that we use that money to do some pavement maintenance task that we refer to as crack sealing, and what we tend to see is cold joints during the pavement process, generally down the center line of the, of the street tends to turn into a crack, and then also we see transverse cracks that result from shrinkage. So most of the streets that we paved with hot mix asphalt over the last 10 years have cracks on that, and the concern is that when we have those cracks, moisture can get down into the base course and the subgrade, and we start getting deterioration from that. So my recommendation is we take this grant, change the scope of work, which is discussed in the resolution, to crack sealing of various streets. Those would be streets that have been paved with hot mix asphalt over the last 10 years. And additionally, Mayor, I would recommend to you that you consider taking additional funds from the gas tax. I would recommend $25,000 to put in this project, and we have a project around $75,000. But the action tonight would be your consideration of the resolution, which would go to the Department of Transportation in order to change the scope.
All right, any comments, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-3, participation in local government road fund grant agreement, November L 400447, changing the scope of it.
Excuse me, Mayor, who made the motion?
Motion made by Mr. Chatterley. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I was wondering, for this repair work that you're proposing, is that a state-proving or is that an outside contractor? What do you use for this type of work?
Mayor and Commission, Mr. Wilson, the arrangement would be upon approval of DOT, we would start, we're scheduled to start the work in March. There is a contractor that holds a state contract with DOT. We would procure off of that state contract, and it's a specialty, specialty contractor that only does this kind of work or other types of sealing work, pavement maintenance contractor, so.
Any other comments? All in favor, vote by the side of I.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on approval of expenses to attend the Denver Outdoor and Retail Show and the New Mexico Game and Fish Outdoor and Adventure Show.
Mayor and Commission, I did ask Jared Chatterley to attend the meeting tonight and address the Commission in regard to this proposal, and he is on hand to talk about it, to answer your questions. You do see a memo in your packet from Jared discussing this, and you'll recall that last year, the city of Raton did register as an exhibitor, and they had a booth at the outdoor retail show. I guess for my input on this discussion, and I'm looking for some guidance from the Commission on the larger question, we have identified outdoor recreation as a primary target of economic development in Raton. And so I think that we have a lot to offer. We're working with the state, is, there's lots of opportunity in, in the area, what with the development of the Crazy French piece, and then some additional development in New Mexico. And what I'd like to hear from the Commission is really how do you want to go about leveraging this, this economic development opportunity? So Commissioner Chatterley has taken the lead in an outdoor recreation committee, which is meeting. To me, the focus is really economic development. I think we look at these kind of proposals with the, with the intent of creating some economic development from it, from bringing additional tourism, from bringing outfitters or potential businesses, or possibly retailers, to the area. And so I think, to me, I would recommend that we talk about, as we're really pursuing our, our outdoor recreation opportunity, how do we measure economic development results and, and what do we expect to get out of those type of opportunities? So obviously, there, there are a number of things, I think, that Commissioner and Jared have attended the outdoor recreation conference in New Mexico, and, and there are a lot of great contacts at those. I think I'd like to hear from the Commission, you know, some discussion of how do we formalize that into, into our economic development plan. Right?
I was gonna save this for the next meeting since we have our reports, but so the outdoor recreation task force has formed, and we have a few people from the community, along with Jessica Barfield and Jared, that are meeting. We've only met once so far, and we've kind of had a strategizing, what exactly are we gonna be doing, you know, what's our purpose? So I think Mr. Barry's question is really valid, because we, we're kind of having the same question, and we've narrowed it down to looking at, one, what recreational assets might best benefit the city and create possibly, because we have these assets, these different entrepreneurial opportunities, and quality of life amenities, for lack of a better term. We're also looking at, I think, events like these that might help us network. I think we've done a really good job already of getting the word out about Raton. I think the new branding has really helped with that. And so I feel like these events, we're kind of creating a name for ourselves. Having Ms. Novas here was a really big deal for the city and all the different partners that came regionally to turn out for that and really show that it's not just Raton, it's our whole region that has this amazing outdoor opportunity, and we had people from Trinidad as well. So I, I guess, my question, you know, the task force, one thing I thought we might do is bring ideas and suggestions for, as we renegotiate the Lake, Lake Dorothy Wildlife Area Contract with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, what would some of our suggestions be? You know, we need to make sure that it's opened up more for hiking, possibly biking, things like that, and not just managed for hunting and fishing. That's gonna be essential, because that's gonna be a connection between the properties up into the Fisher's Peak area. Looking at possibly some new acquisitions with New Mexico State Parks up there in Sugar Creek, and what would be the best possible use of that? Where might a trail linking downtown to the state park and, and keeping that flow open better, you know, like Immigraine is coming with, you know, the off, trying to figure out an off-the-road way? And I think that that's actually gonna be really essential as we try to connect this. You know, can we connect to something where we have Raton to Fisher's Peak to Trinidad, back to Raton through the Old Pass? You know, are there any opportunities? Who can we work with? Can we talk to landowners? I know some are less excited about than others. So there are a lot of different things the task force is looking at. I think our priority is just figuring out what we're doing first. And so I, we are more than welcome to input. You're more than welcome to the meeting. I can send you that information. It's gonna be in the evening on...
23rd.
The 23rd at our, at my house?
I guess I didn't realize you had already formed this task force. That's nice.
Yeah, Mr. Barry had pulled me in and said, hey, let's get this going, and so we started inviting, we have, remind me...
Emma?
Immigraine, Tyler Davis, and now Kelly was unable to stay, so Elizabeth Beck, a somewhat new resident of Raton, is gonna join us as well. So we have those three members of the community.
23rd of this month.
23rd of this month, it's a Thursday.
It's next week.
Okay.
Week after next.
Wow, this week, this month is not...
It's the 14th, so we're just about...
Right. Not this coming Thursday, but the following.
If you say so, Commissioner.
Everything's going really fast, so... And then, and then we have Jessica and Jared. So that's, Scott had encouraged us to keep it small and active and working and try to get some younger, fresh perspectives of people who may have also lived other places as well, and some people, you know, who've lived here, so.
Okay. Jared?
Sir.
What's your opinion when you attend these events? What are you hearing? How is it affecting us?
The, I think the greatest benefit, because we went in, in July to the, the Summer Outdoor Retail Show, we went as an exhibitor. It cost us a substantial amount of money. Having had that experience, looking back, I think rather than the expense of actually having a booth, the true impact is being able to, instead of sitting at a booth, talking to people coming by, is to go and talk to the other exhibitors, actually put stuff in people's hands, have conversation of Raton, New Mexico. A lot of people know New Mexico. I think that's where the true benefit is. And so I approached New Mexico Partnership, they're the ones who kind of put this together, and asked them if it was possible to be registered as an exhibitor without having to pay the fees to be an actual exhibitor. The advantage of that is you, instead of being held outside the actual expo area, you get to go in, and that gives you direct contact with other exhibitors outside of the confusion of everybody else. New Mexico Partnership agreed to do that, so they would register us as an exhibitor as part of their booth with no expense to us. I think it's beneficial in two ways. One, obviously, the one-to-one contact with retailers and manufacturers and the stuff that, you know, we try to get here, but also just partnering with the state, showing the state that we, as Raton, are outdoor recreation-minded and outdoor recreational-focused, give us inroads with the state that we wouldn't get otherwise, just by kind of being a partner. I mean, it shows that they were willing to do this for us, just because of the partnerships and the relationship we forged during the summer show. So I think that's the real benefit, is to, you know, if we can call up New Mexico Partnership, or if we can call up the outdoor recreation department, and they know who we are, and they, you know, we've had a relationship, that gets us all sorts of benefits that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Yeah, reading through your proposal, I thought it sounded pretty good.
Now, the other show, the, so that's the outdoor, the Winter Outdoor Retailer Show. The other show was the one put on by New Mexico Game and Fish. We have never been. I'm not exactly familiar with the show, as far as how long it's operated, really how big it is, the venue, what kind of people that are attracting. I think it's very much more kind of a, a sportsman show rather than outdoor industry gear stuff. This is more focused on hunting, fishing. Should we decide to participate in that show? I think it should be a partnership. I think it should be a partnership, whether it, you know, we as the city host it, but there's a lot of other businesses who partner with us to go promote Raton. So it's not just us with our cool banners, but it's Vermejo or Sugar Reeve. So people are seeing these other entities there and have a reason to come.
Yeah, I like that, how you put that in there. A way to get us out there.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and it's also another opportunity to, to, you know, hug up with Game and Fish and, and, you know, have contacts there and make friends and, you know, have those relationships to be beneficial for us in the future. If we have to pick between one or the other, I would recommend the Outdoor Retailer Show. I think it has, uh, a bigger impact and possibility of bringing business to Raton, um, as far as like manufacturing and that kind of stuff, whereas the New Mexico Adventure Show would be like bringing tourists to Raton, more of a touristy, come and hunt here, come and, those kind of things.
So Mayor Commission, um, we have, uh, really didn't have a, a budget for this request. And you'll recall last year, uh, we funded that through the non-promotional, uh, lodgers tax. Uh, and, and, and just kind of looking ahead in the, uh, budget adjustment we're gonna consider, uh, tonight. We had established a travel, uh, line item under non-promo lodgers tax and we have a thousand dollars. I know we're estimating that, you know, it would be up to that for this event. Um, but, uh, yeah, really looking for guidance on how you wanna, how you wanna do these things down the road.
Well, I think down the road, it certainly fits, in my opinion, under economic development. And it's, you know, if we pass the tax, maybe we create some kind of line item off of that account.
Right.
That would be my direction.
I have to agree with you. I think it's a great proposal that you put before.
Thank you.
And I, I believe you should go to both of them.
Yeah.
I think that, uh, because, you've never been to the New Mexico one.
No, I've never been, so.
Get to that and, and find out what it is. And in the future, like I said, we got a, a little bit of money that's coming our way for the economic development. So I, I, I believe that your proposal is pretty darn good and I think you should go to both of them first.
I'd be happy to represent the city at both of them.
And we appreciate that clarification. That, that really helps us.
Make a motion that I get to go with it.
Got my vote.
I, I do appreciate, so the Outdoor Retailer Show, the initial one is free, is this pretty?
Yeah, there, there is no cost to us. We're not, I mean, we're partnering with sense that they're getting it in as an exhibitor, but we're not gonna be an official exhibitor.
And then the other one's one fifty. I think, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, or if, and if we don't go as an exhibitor, it's a three-dollar, uh, participation fee if you just go to the show.
Three dollars.
All right. I'll get dinner, you get the registration.
That's a fair bargain.
Mayor Commission, we really have, you know, two things, uh, two chances for your approval there. We, we do say deliberate and act, you get your approval on these expenses. Then we do have that reflected in our budget adjustment resolution under aye, so you would see that again on the next item.
Ms. Mayor, just because it's my husband who's traveling, I'm staying for the most, but I do support the city attending these events.
Okay. We'll, we'll let you do that. I would add a motion to approve the expenses.
I make the motion?
Make a motion and a second to approve the expenses to attend both events?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
And no, Ms. Chatterley, have to stand? Motion, yes, thank you.
So, while I have a list in the air for me. Well, this is kind of exciting, so you might just want to hear.
All right.
Uh, so I was asked to present at the Healthy Kids, Healthy Communities, um, monthly meeting, I guess it is, um, last week. And, uh, I was asked to present on the task force and some of the projects that the, you know, outdoor recreation is, is getting involved in. And there was a gentleman there, um, by the name of David Nezzi. And it turns out that he is from Senator Heinrich's office. And, uh, I'm really not sure why he was there, but as I was explaining what we were doing, he said that they were planning on hosting a outdoor recreation entrepreneur workshop sponsored by, uh, Senator Heinrich's office. Um, and they were talking about doing it in Taos. But after I was able to whoop up on him substantially, bring out the dog and pony, uh, he was quickly convinced that Raton would be a better place. And so we, uh, I've been in contact with him over email. Um, that decision to actually have it here would be, is being made in DC, which is kind of cool. But I copied Axie Navas in on that conversation and she responded to him saying that the state supports them having that workshop here in Raton. So it was supposed to be sometime in March. I already know we have something kind of going on in March. I'm not sure. I asked him questions, it was like how big the venue was and some of those logistical things. He said he didn't know yet, but should we be selected to host that workshop? It'll be here in March. So we are on Senator Heinrich's office radar.
He in DC in his office in March.
Sure, dude. Press some flash, man. Make it happen.
All righty.
Thank you, Commission. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2020-4, for your 2020 budget adjustment number five. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor Commission, you have Resolution 2020-4 in your packet. This was consideration of budget adjustment number five for this fiscal year. Uh, city clerk has, uh, put together details, uh, for you. Um, you see some, uh, adjustments here regarding, uh, overtime and our dispatch, uh, some equipment maintenance in the police department. Uh, we've talked about what's going on with our police vehicles. They are, you know, we do repairs to those and a lot of times they're costly repairs with these older vehicles. They're really, uh, uh, creating a hit on our general fund. So, you know, we'll probably continue to see some of that until we, uh, get some new vehicles in that department. Um, but we do anticipate, uh, some activities in the, uh, depot project. We would like to be, uh, in construction this summer. So we do have the engineers, uh, working on, um, preliminary design right now. We, they have generated preliminary design. Our next steps on that would be, uh, we'll talk to the state historic preservation office as well as federal highway office, uh, get their authorization to proceed along, uh, past that preliminary design. Uh, and then, uh, you see a couple of other items on there, but the, uh, travel that we just talked about, uh, you see that included in there. And then one item, last item we'll bring up, um, you see the seventy-five thousand dollars for, uh, payment maintenance crack ceiling that I mentioned. And, uh, included in that would be, uh, the transfer of, uh, around twenty-four thousand dollars from the gas tax farm, uh, to that project.
All righty, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-4 for your 2020 budget adjustment number five.
And make a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2020-4, budget adjustment number five. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Close. Mr. Berry. Item J, deliberate and act on Region Four Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Berry.
Yeah, Mayor Commission, this is the Region Four Narcotics Task Force, uh, agreement. I have asked Chief Garcia to, uh, uh, give you some information in regard to this agreement. But, uh, for me, I'm, uh, really excited to see that we are getting the regional task force, uh, back to operation again. We haven't had that for several years and I think it's a, a pretty effective tool. So, uh, chief?
Mayor Commission. Uh, just so you know, the request for reinstatement into this GPA is not, uh, taken lightly. Uh, being here for as long as I have, I've seen operations in the past that have ended up in federal court where the city of Raton has ended up holding the bag, uh, with the region stepping away from it, wiping their hands clean of it and leaving us holding that. So, uh, I've been in extensive talks with Chief Bibb from Las Vegas, New Mexico. Uh, Las Vegas PD is the grant holder. And I've been assured, uh, time and time again, uh, after my concerns were passed along to him that operations will be changed, uh, that it's a new system in place, that the, whoever is in the region, uh, region is the northeast corner of New Mexico, Region Four, uh, will be taken care of by SEC Region as a federally funded grant. And as busy it is, as it is in town, I think the more help, the better for us as far as narcotics task force go. Uh, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer for us, but I just wanted to make sure everything was on the up and up before I even presented this to you for approval. So that's kind of where we stand. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Chief, I noticed that the sheriff and all of them have been in community that are going to come on board.
I don't believe that the county is. Uh, joining this joint powers agreement will authorize us to work outside of our city limits though, uh, through, uh, through the feds. So we should be covered with that. Um, I know the sheriff is a little leery as I was. Um, I do not believe that he's, he's been approached or asked, but he's stayed away from it, so.
Any other questions? Berry, any?
Uh, Mayor, I, uh, I, I think it is a, a, uh, an effective tool. As the chief said, there, there can be some risks that go along with it, but I would, uh, I would give you my recommendation to, uh, act favorably on the agreement.
Yeah, speaking from experience, many moons ago, my little brother was involved in some of these operations.
Yes, sir. The operations are good. It's just a matter of backing your people in the area that you're running those operations. So I, I think we'll get that backing now.
I will move to approve Region Four Task Force for Powers Agreement.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Joint Task Force for Powers Agreement. Is there any further questions or discussions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Close. Mr. Berry, thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor Commission.
And finally, item K, City Manager's Report. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, I had reported to you on the, uh, progress on the filter plant construction and you heard, uh, Terry Sykes report that we're about eighty percent completion on that and we expect, um, completion of construction this spring. Also, uh, looked at the hospital drive lift station project, uh, with Dan and Terry, and that's a similar place as well. Um, most of the construction is done. We're looking at installation of a generator, uh, control systems, uh, and then the startup process on that. And of course, we have, uh, the old lift station in service right now and then you switch over to the new one. Uh, and, uh, uh, you know, wastewater does not quit coming, so dynamic thing there. But I would say that that's an important project for Raton. Both of these are large infrastructure projects. Uh, they're going along, uh, very well and you got a couple of, uh, very capable gentlemen there managing those projects. Um, we have been involved with, uh, pre-bid or pre-construction activities on some of our, uh, bigger projects that we've talked about. That includes, uh, Great Blocks Phase Three project. Uh, includes the, uh, depot project that we had talked about, our cooperative agreement project that we talked about, municipal arterial project. It's been a while since we talked about that one, but that's, uh, on the schedule, doing some, uh, uh, pre-construction or pre-bid activities on that. Community development block grant, uh, and then our solid waste transfer station. So, uh, busy time as far as the infrastructure improvements go. It's gonna remain that way. Uh, we have a lot of other projects to bring to you through the course of the year and talk about. Uh, so we really look for a big year as far as infrastructure improvements. Um, we are currently one of those, and this is a, a smaller project, but, uh, I met with the architect today and, uh, some people from shooter restoration. We're making final revisions to, uh, the design, to a project that's a phase of shooter theater renovations. Uh, what we propose under, uh, this project would be restaurate, or renovation of the office area. Uh, we would continue to use that for an office, but we would also have a concession area there. And I think that helps utilization of the shooter. Uh, we will complete those, uh, design revisions and put this out to bid and, uh, at one of the future meetings, uh, bring that to the commission for your consideration of the bid. We have, uh, committed or expended about ninety-five percent of the twenty-nineteen capital outlay funding that was, uh, put in place for public works equipment. That was two hundred thousand dollars and we probably have about ten thousand, uh, left. And, uh, we'll look at a small equipment purchase, uh, for that. There's not a lot you can do with ten thousand dollars, but, uh, we are pretty well, uh, expended with that. Uh, you'll remember from twenty-nineteen that they also funded some police equipment and we are replacing, uh, some computer equipment and we're in the process of, of procuring that here currently. So, uh, we should have both of those, uh, pieces of capital outlay fully expended, uh, um, in the next sixty days. And, uh, I have met with some of our legislatures about the twenty-twenty capital outlay requests. I'll make a trip to the legislature, uh, in the first week of the legislature and submit those to legislative services. And, uh, then we'll, uh, try to encourage our legislators to address some of our critical needs here in Raton. Um, with a couple of public works staff, I did attend the UNM Paving and Transportation Conference in Albuquerque, uh, last week. And, uh, we did learn about, uh, new technology, materials and best practices as related to, uh, paving and transportation systems. I think that's valuable for some of our staff. And yes, we've got a second page. I would note that, uh, the state auditor, that's, uh, Brian Cullon, will be in Raton tomorrow. Uh, he will open, hold open office hours. That's at the Colfax County Courthouse. That's the courthouse that's located across the street, not the one on the south end of town, uh, two-thirty North Third Street.